We will start with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, the roll call, Mr. Go.
Here.
Mr. Pratt.
Here.
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 Here. Item number three, I made a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, discussion, or corrections? Done, okay. Mr. Go.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Pratt.
Yes.
Yes. Item four, consent agenda, can you get a motion to move on to that?
Second.
So we'll read through the headings here real quick. We have some resignations, some professional staff for twenty-four, twenty-five, some support staff for twenty-four, twenty-five, and some contract amendments. Mr. Nado, is there anything I'd like to draw attention to here?
This was originally based on our projections for our summer hiring. We had three, and we did a projection. We had some hours that needed, we had more kids that tested, we had some service hours for students with disabilities. And so we just need to adjust to a lot of the hours that we staffed.
Any questions or comments?
With the, these are higher in salary looking for.
For these, we are, we are making, still, we have our child interviews, we have some science over at the high school. But we have candidates that are actively. We actually have a special education candidate to apply today, so that interview is set for that's about it. As far as the general, we've been doing that, we've filled proud, Mr. Boz, but leave proud of this film. So we're moving on, we know in special education, science part of the film, we have candidates. So I think we're doing, we had the magic day kid, so now it's just a matter of us.
I'd just like to mention for people watching, four, two, four, three are the employment of special staff, support staff, four ones resignation.
Oh, did I miss that? That's correct, thank you. Okay, Mr. Go.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Item number five, item five point one, approve the line doc counseling services contract for twenty-four, twenty-five, can I get a motion?
A second.
So this is a continuation of service. It allows us to continue to provide services for students in accordance to what we did last year. All that we did this year that is somewhat different is we met with the administration for line doc counseling contract from up, what exactly. So this contract looks a little bit different, only in the fact that last year, there was an amount on there not to succeed that we'd never come close to touching. It was a hundred and sixty thousand, and historically, we'd never gone above a hundred and ten. So we start to analyze throughout the year, where will we add in our budget, how much percentage? It really was a true accurate picture, so I met with the team enough. But we went over some numbers, and the number that's reflected in the contract this year is not only historically what we done to match this last year, but per professional opinion, it also will provide what we need for all of our students. And so this way, when we look next year, we're going through our year to be able to actually say, what percentage and how are we doing? We'll have a more accurate picture of what we're doing. And so that's a provision that if we need to do more, we can back to the board. Once we get that level, we get approval.
It allows us to maintain services as they were offered.
Maintain services as offered, and also, it was their professional recommendation that this will be all of our needs for next year based on their profession. And I really did defer to them, they're the experts who know what it takes to be what these students need. And she was very confident that that number would match what our student population.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Go.
Yes.
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 Yes. Item number five point two, approve the bus driver routes for twenty-four, twenty-five, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
So Randy and his team, Randy and his team are doing a great job trying to prepare for next year. We decided to try and get this on because he's hiring, we still have, I think, three and a half hour bus driver that we need. But being able to get the routes allowed, we need to go on, and it also really helps the finance team. We had to send out what we do, salary notices. So by doing this now, instead of waiting, it reduces having to send out salary notices. We decided not based on what was projected, gather back to in August and say, please do this, and have finance have to send out a whole bunch of other salary.
If I remember in the past, we've approved the routes after we've already been bussing kids for a lot of years, so.
Right, this allows us a provision that we can finish that staff, have the routes assigned, and they're approved way before we even start.
How are we doing on the bus driver staffing overall? I know we've been in trouble in the past. So are we, is it sort of stabilized at this point? Are we, are we okay for the?
I believe so, I'm gonna look to Mr. Boz, but I believe we just have one three and a half hour route that we're looking for right now.
That's correct, and he was talking to an individual today, either today or tomorrow, to fill that route.
Okay, so I think we're really doing well, and again, trying to get all this information and more knowledge and approval of it before we actually start those processes of us.
We also, last year because of the L Street project, had additional routing that has all been removed, and people are aware of who's getting bussed and who isn't.
Mr. Go, you might don't answer this, or my name is Mr. Boz. We had that many drivers in place this soon before the school started?
No.
I don't think since I've been on the board, we've been scrambling.
We have.
So can that be attributed to the staggered start, or is that attributed to something else?
I can't answer that. I can't give you specifics, but what I will tell you is I think it's, it's all of our teams have been working this summer really need to be applauded. Randy's been working still trying to start early, because we believe it's important to try and secure staff early. Not only to make sure they access training, but we know what we're doing, we can answer questions, we can prepare them the best as possible. And that's tripled down for Mr. Boz and his team, which is in HR pursuit of trying to make the work the best we can staff. He had some staff member, you know, that was working even on July fourth, right, because the state of July tenth was coming up. I think everybody sees the importance of hiring, educating, training staff, and they're working so hard in order to do that in appropriate time.
Well, Mr. Kizian, we need to ask, have we received a lot of feedback from parents that the open development now laying out the kids no longer. People like driving distance, not geographic distance.
Can't speak to a specific number, I have received. The special circumstance that understanding of bloods, it was a student with disabilities and technical requirements for bussing. Other than that, to my knowledge, there had not been any, you know, exposed, you heard any? I have none, no.
Any other questions or comments?
No, I would just say thank you to Mr. Conner and to Mr. Boz for giving everything right ahead of time, that's very nice.
I love doing things before.
Well, I'd like to thank the people that applied to these positions, I saw we hired two of them today. So it's good luck, I mean, it's a tough job.
It is a tough job.
I think what Mr. Pratt meant to say.
I wish them to say, this is good news, it's not easy to find, every year we're like, okay, and so there's new people here, it's like, good.
And it's fair to recognize, that's not an easy position.
And I think they're underappreciated, I will, we really appreciate them, we trust them, getting our kids safe, and they have to do the training, so seeing people applying is like great, and they're good people too, so.
Mr. Go.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. And item five point three, accept the treasure resignation, can I get a motion? I'll move on.
If I could just for a minute, I do want to take a moment just to thank Mr. Go. Been here first year, but the immense impact that he's had, not only in helping us move forward with a whole bunch of areas and making sure we're becoming more efficient, but just coming in and creating the culture in the finance department and becoming a team, right? Sometimes I've been in districts where finance is somewhat separate, right? If you walk in now, I think Mr. Go's really striving on working with Mr. Boz and myself to become teams, to become team. And then our individual departments then have joined together. And I think his impact on us, it's not just gonna be felt right now, it's gonna be over the next couple of years as we continue to implement what he has started. And wish him the best of luck in moving forward.
Thank you, but I'll defer to the key word, it is a team, it's not anything that, there's great people here that were helping to change, we talked about that fact. They've taken that ball, so it's bigger than anyone personally, I'm just out of the room, Jerry.
I too want to express appreciation for all you've done, I've appreciated the work you've done this year, and I've appreciated the relationship that we've had this year, so wish you nothing but the best.
Thank you.
I think there's a special that, you mentioned this in your letter to the district, and I think that we've had these discussions, but there's no secret that we've had turnover in our leadership. And so there's question, the murmurs around moving to treasure. I think it is incredible where you were going and what you were doing, and that you were sought out for that. I think that we were lucky to have you for the time we had. I can't speak for everybody, I'm really excited for you, and I think it speaks to your talent and what you did great here for the year, that this opportunity presented itself. So I'm excited for you, sad for us, but thank you for the foundation.
I know I'm not on camera, but I think I'm live, I think that's important. This was an opportunity that came up, I know there's been tremendous turnover here, straightly. It has nothing to do with anything that was done, my letter's a public record, I've said it, and these are great people that are working hard, difficult field right now, really polarized, so I applaud you for that. My team's phenomenal, the administrative teachers, the unions especially, just phenomenal. They want things to continue, I believe you're on that path, I'm sad that I'm not gonna be here to see that through. But again, I hope we have to come back, I know Jerry, we've developed some friendships, some sort of relationships. So I'm excited to see where you go as a district, but I think it is important for the community to know this was something I was sought out for, the largest district in the state does not, but just not. It has nothing to do with anything that is wrong at Tiffin City School, so I want to reiterate that.
Thank you for the strategy made in the year, and we do really honestly wish you well, and we will miss you here, obviously.
I don't think I have anything else to add, and it's the repetition of what I said. I mean, we had the right person at the right time, only for a short period of time, but I think we're on a good path here, right, you are.
And I think that's what he said, it was, I think the board recognized the talent that you have, and in reality, it's somebody else that afterwards. That's what happened to me, I've been people, but we are a smaller big district, and that's actually normal for something in our district, that people come in here and get their experience and get recruited by bigger opportunities, and that's a part of our normal cycle here. And I think people just understand it's normally what happens, so wish you all the luck. And I would tell you that you've done some major things there, and I hope we can continue on, so.
And just for anyone watching, we do have Mr. Go's presentation letter. Okay, any other questions or comments? Can you call the roll to accept your own resignation? Mr. Go.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Yes.
All right, moving on to item number six, the executive session. We will hold the executive session this evening to consider the employment of a public employee. Conversation largely related to what we're gonna do next with treasure. So can I get a motion to enter executive session?
Second.
Mr. Go.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Sette.
Yes.
Yes. Again, we do intend to return after with a sort of a briefing of what we intend to do next.
You may not recognize the background, but we're in the, what is the library vision, media room?
Media room.
Media room, and we're doing that tonight because it's the depression, the last show, national show here at Tiffin Middle School this weekend, Saturday and Sundays, so that's why we're beaming live from the library here, because they set up, so come on and enjoy that great show.
Be better here.
So item number seven exit executive session will note that we refer to me that or exit executive session at six forty one PM. I don't remember before discussion this kind of a summary of what we talked about in executive session. Obviously with our treasure leaving, we have to have a treasure in place so this contract ends August first. So as of August first, we don't longer have treasure that is against law. So we have reached out earlier this week to a few organizations who can supply temporary treasures. So I'll reach out to them tomorrow morning, see if I can get some names by then be tomorrow for the board review. We'll try to get some some brief reviews set up for next week so we can have someone in place where to go on August first if not before that. And then we'll treat that as an interim while we can get a search organized knowing that August first is not an ideal time to form a search for a treasure. Any other anything else to add to that?
Well, we will have to have a special board meeting yet this month.
Yes.
To hire an interview.
That's right. Yes. Okay. All right. Item number nine, German and a motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Wood.
Yes. Next regularly scheduled board meeting is August sorry, Monday, August twenty six, twenty twenty four at six thirty PM. We still need the working sessions?
Yes.
Yes. Or so working session.
Oh well, we have a need for working session, but we'll have an interim.
So working session five forty five.
And expect to see special notices, special board meetings prior to then.
Yep. Yep. All right. I think we're done.